What's that? Great, thank you Caitlin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Newburyport zoning board of appeals for our hearing this evening of September 12th, 2023. My name is Rob Chappetti, I have the privilege of serving as the chair of the ZBA. I'm going to take a moment to introduce myself and the members, though few of us there are, we do have a quorum, one of whom is attending remotely via Zoom, in the sort of holdover vestige of all times COVID. We still have a bit of a hybrid model, which means that folks can log on remotely, participate remotely, and even members to the extent necessary can be here remotely as one of our members in fact this evening. So what I'd like to do is just kind of go over the lay of the land and the flow in many ZBA. For those among you who may be familiar, I apologize in advance for anyone who hasn't attended a zoning board of appeals hearing or any public administrative board hearing. This will be just sort of what to expect, and so we can keep our flow moving. We have a very short agenda this evening, but we'll go through everything as it appears in our published agenda. I believe we have one request for continuance, but two of the three will be moving forward. So before we begin, I'll just establish with a roll call who's in attendance. We'll legally establish that we have in fact a quorum, which is the legal basis by which we conduct the business of the Newburyport zoning board of appeals. We are recording this evening as well. And everyone who's here in person, as well as everyone online can follow along and be able to engage. And I'll explain it, how we go about that. So without further ado, I will just call roll, establish quorum, list the voting, legal voting members. Then we'll get into a quick outline of flow and then get right into the business of this evening. So calling the roll call of the Newburyport zoning board of appeals, September 12th, 2023. Mr. Ken Swanton here, Mr. Walter Budchannon here, and Ms. Patricia Pecknick?
Here.
And Rob Chappetti, I'm here. That is four present, that is the minimum quorum. Of course, all four of us will be the legal voting members. So that means that in any application that goes forward this evening, in order for that application to succeed, it will require unanimity of the board, which is all four of the board members must vote in the affirmative for the project to move forward and for the application to be approved. So looking at our agenda this evening, I'll just take a quick moment and describe for those for whom this might be new, what we do and how we do it. We begin having call on our roll with our business meeting. We have one matter that's on, which is just a request for a permit extension on 23 Boyd Drive. Then we get into our public hearings. We have three public hearings that are on our agenda. In the order in which they're shown, I will go through those. There is one continuance which is, which we will take on first. If anyone's here or online in connection with that application, you needn't wait around just to find out that it's getting continued. And that's just sort of a common courtesy. We like to pay attention to if we can. When we go through the public hearings just for flow, I will begin by reading the legal notice. That's simply the description of the application by the applicant/owner's name, the address, as well as a quick descriptor of the relief being sought by that application. That will be described as either variance, a special permit, special permit for nonconformities, just as it's listed in the agenda, and then a quick description in sort of natural real language on what exactly the applicant seeks to do, just so that no one, God forbid, need to have to be an attorney in order to understand what exactly is being requested. We'll simply describe, or I'll describe it as, the applicant seeks all necessary permits to demolish and/or reconstruct a structure, or you know, creative addition, et cetera. Just something that makes it very natural and easy to understand in as few words as possible. Once we go through that legal notice, we'll then invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to take the podium, and we have these out recording microphone and broadcasting equipment here so that you just simply keep your voice up if you could. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak to kindly take the podium and just lower the mic and just speak normally. We'll then entertain the application presentation by the applicant or the applicant's attorney, architect, engineer, all of the above. After the application's been presented, I then close that first portion of the public hearing as we go into the second portion in sort of this organizational flow of the zoning board of appeals. When we go into the public comment section, when that happens, either Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, or Andy Pointford, our planning director, will put up, actually Caitlin Sullivan will put up a slide which simply describes the lay of the land with public comment. We ask that folks kindly just govern themselves accordingly with respect to the courtesy of time spent. We do have a two-minute limit. I exercise discretion of all the time to allow folks to complete thoughts and to get to, you know, the conclusion of their comments. We do, if it's a busy evening and if it goes long, I'll be as courteous as possible to kind of invite you to sort of wrap things up. But in this evening, there's not many people here, so you know, we'll ask you to just sort of, you know, govern yourselves. So two minutes more or less, whatever you like to say, you need to be in a pro or con column. You can simply just raise your hand. We'll start with any hands in the room. I'll recognize you. We'll ask you to take the podium, give your name and address for our keeper of the minutes, the scratcher Joy, who's also remote. And then just speak your mind, share with us what you wish to say. Please note that if you do wish to frame your color comment in the form of a question, that's certainly welcome and very common. We just want to sort of give you advanced notice that the board members would mean no disrespect to not directly answer that question, at least not then, but know well that we are listening, we are taking notes, and you almost assuredly will hear your question reframed by a member of the board in the subsequent segment of this hearing. We just don't directly engage in questions, but feel free to frame your comment in the form of a question and know that we mean no disrespect if you don't hear us address it directly. Once we go through everyone in the room, I'll open it up to anyone online and they'll show their intent to want to speak by raising their hand remotely. And anyone virtually here via Zoom, I'll then recognize by name. We'll ask that, we'll unmute their mic, ask that they do the same, and then we'll listen to any comments from anyone online. One, you've exhausted the group and online, and we try to be, you know, sort of judicious, not a little bit judicious about it, but we are very much tolerant and open to want to hear the comments of those who wish to share it. Once we get through all of that, I'll then close that second portion of the public hearing and then we go to questions from the board. That's when members of the board, myself included, but beginning with members that are here in the room, as well as Ms. Pecknick who's remote, will ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's representatives. This is when you will hear oftentimes a question that was posed or a public comment, if that was the case, sort of reframed by a member of the board. After we go through questions from the board, I'll then close that third portion of the public hearing and we go to the fourth and final portion of our public hearings, which are deliberations. This is when the members of the ZBA will deliberate out loud, sort of in open public meeting, of the legal criteria that had to be met by the applicant and the application, whether the material presented, you know, rose to the level of having met that criteria in the judgment of individual members. The members will discuss by between themselves, pose the legal criteria, just sort of discuss the application partly, and whether it met with their sense of, you know, of material. Whether the members of the ZBA felt it rose to that level, the criteria, if so, why and not, why not. Basically, in a public hearing, you get to hear everything as we think it out loud. So there are no sort of quiet thoughts in zoning board business. So once we go through deliberations, I will then close that fourth and final portion of the public hearing, at which point we go to a vote. The way a vote is presented is under Robert's rules of order, so a motion. I will ask for a motion by a member of the ZBA. A motion is always presented in the affirmative. It's motion approved. Please understand that I always say this. That doesn't mean that the member of the ZBA makes that motion, intends to support it, or plans to vote in favor of it. It's simply the administrative format by which the question is placed onto the table for a vote. So it's a motion to approve, that's then seconded, at which point I take the role of all members of the ZBA, myself included, and in order for the application to succeed, it must receive, as I mentioned earlier, unanimity in my mind for members of the ZBA. So all four of us must vote in the affirmative for the motion to carry and the application to be approved. So that's really it, in a nutshell, a very long-winded nutshell. But that's how we do our business every meeting. I always like to do that just in advance so you know what to expect and know how the flow works. So with that, I will go back to our agenda and we will go into the business meeting. This is a preliminary request for a permit extension. This is an application that's already happened, a permit's already been granted, and the applicant is coming back before us to request an extension for additional time. We'll then get into the public hearing starting with 48 Woodland, 3436 Prospect, then 6 Julius Street. So with that, we will go to the request for a permit extension on 23 Boyd Drive. This is a request for an extension to the existing permit. Anyone here on that application that wishes to speak or be heard? Okay. So this is a fairly routine request ZBA gets often when the clock gets run for one reason or another. So there was the ZBA, and we'll just begin with Ken. Any thoughts, any comments? Anyone who wishes to be heard on the applicant's request to extend? Caitlin, how much time do they want?
An additional three years.
Three years, okay, so that's a standard. Did they ask for three years or did they just go with the statutory?
This one was approved, yeah, additional three years.
Very good. Okay, so the applicant seeks an additional three years on their permit to complete work and get it finished. Any thoughts, comments? Ken?
Seems pretty routine to me. I have quite a five minutes. Very good. And well, we've got noted here that the square footage is within the regulations. Owner's parents still occupy the in-law apartment, and there is sufficient onsite party for both the family and the in-law apartment. I think we'll go with apartments, so.
Very good. Let me consider it. And just to be clear, and I apologize, this is an extension of an in-law apartment special permit, which is routine. The applicants must demonstrate with regularity and come back before us to request it, that they still meet the criteria. And so, and Ms. Pecknick, anything that you wish to share?
Yes, yes. Yes, I would approve the extension of this permit.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing further, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve or request an extended in-law special permit for 23 Boyd Drive for three this whole year.
Thank you, the motion made by Mr. Swan. Do we have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Ken. The motion made by Mr. Swan and seconded by Miss Channon. On the motion to approve the extension for three years, calling the roll, Mr. Swan?
Yeah.
Mr. Channon?
Yeah.
Ms. Pecknick?
Yes.
And Rob Chappetti, I vote yes, that's four in the affirmative.
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries that matter is, that application's approved for an extension of three years. Thank you. So now moving into our public hearings. This is the application of Russell and Deborah Worthington, 48 Woodland Street. The matter is continued from August 22nd.
Yes, you know what? Thank you. And my apologies, we're just going to do a quick continuation on the second application. We'll get that one done and then we'll be right back. Thank you very much. Apologies for that. As promised, we have one application for which the applicant is seeking a continuance. We'll get that one done first in case there's anyone here or online that came here for this application. This is the application of Michael Real Estate and Construction LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Towerman and Costa LLC, 3436 Prospect Street. This is a special permit for nonconformities to renovate an existing two-family structure, including an upward extension of a rear addition, and the applicant seeks a continuance of this. Attorney Mead, you wish to be heard?
Thank you. The applicant seeks a continuance to the 26th. We have a board with sufficient numbers.
Great. I'm going to be here on the 26th.
Well, but we have four or five.
Do we have any other? I'm recused from this.
That's the problem this evening, when they have three members that can vote.
Can you just make sure that I'm not, and pardon me, I should have checked this, but it just occurred to me. Actually, yeah, unfortunately I would be traveling the 26th, so that means that we would be down, we would be down Mr. Swan and myself. Patricia, will you be able to attend on the 26th?
Yes, yes, I'll be there on the 26th.
There's two.
So we spoke that the remainder of the numbers will be there. I'd like to continue it to that date because you're going to have a full agenda that's going to need you to turn around if you don't have other members.
Okay, why don't we do that? And I'll look with a shepherd pencil to my travel. I don't want to cause disruption, so I have a little bit of flexibility. If I can, I'll try to do that.
That's great.
So let's just go ahead and move on that continuance to the 26th. Sorry about that.
That's right.
Should have seen that earlier. Okay.
Thank you.
Request is made for continuance to 9/26. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue 3436 Prospect Street, CNC 23-20 until the 26th of September 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Channon. And do we have a second? Oh, yeah. Ms. Pecknick, could you second?
I'll second, yes. Yes, I second that.
Made by Mr. Channon, seconded by Ms. Pecknick to continue to 9/26, calling the roll, Mr. Channon. Yes, Ms. Pecknick?
Yes.
Rob Chappetti, I vote yes, that's four in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, matter is continued to 9/26. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you for your patience on 48 Woodland Street. So now, circling back on the application of Russell and Deborah Worthington, 48 Woodland Street. Matter is continued from 8/22/2023. This is a special permit for, sorry, this is a variance based on revised zoning determination. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to replace an existing pervertile structure above the patio with a new roofed structure. And may we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Worthington, and this is my husband Russell Worthington, and we reside at 48 Woodland Street in Newburyport. We've been residents for eight years, and I'm a design professional for over 40 years. And we are seeking approval to put a roof over the open pergola. So there will be no walls. It will just be a roofed structure to protect us from the elements and allow us to enjoy this space year-round. So we can, that's the photo of the house at this point, and the pergola is on the left-hand side. And we wrote a letter, assuming everyone was able to read the letter that we wrote, to explain the purpose of this. And we have a limited property, so this is, this side part where the pergola is, is really our yard. We don't have a backyard. It's the driveway. So this space is our most accessible outdoor space that we have. So with that, we can move through the design portion. So this is an elevation of the front of the house. The top is the existing showing the pergola as it exists at this point in time. And the bottom diagram explains a hip roof structure that will have gutters that will be controlled runoff. The materials will be consistent with our house so that it appears as if it has always been there. And the columns will be sized accordingly, but they will remain the same style that we have on the front of the house as well. Next. This is three elevations, one looking at the pergola. The first plan shows an elevation looking directly at the pergola as it relates to the rest of the house. The elevation on the other side is a sun porch that exists with screened casement windows. And the bottom photo shows what the design intent is to have an open structure with a roof to protect us from the elements and keeping the same roof line as we. It's a hip roof, so it's naturally lower in style than a peaked roof, but it will return itself onto the structure where the pitch is the peak of the pitch of the existing roof. Next. These are the rear elevations of the house. The top elevation is showing the pergola on the right-hand side, and the bottom elevation is showing it with the hip roof. As you can see, how it naturally comes down to be proportionate to the rest of the roof that will be over the patio. And also, the existing pergola footprint is larger than the footprint of what we're proposing for the roof structure. So it's now like 16 by 18, it's going to go down to like 13 by 13.5. Next. In the top photo, you see in an actual photo of how the pergola situated on the property. And the bottom photos, the one straight on to the left, number two, is an elevation perspective showing what we have in mind for the space to be able to enjoy it year-round. And there's an isometric perspective on the right that shows how it would look when it's finished. This is the floor plan, just basically letting you know that it is smaller footprint than the original pergola. And just structurally, how it looks it with the columns. And one of the reasons that we want to put a structure over that is not only to enjoy it year-round, but we have a tree that drops detritus all over this pergola most of all of the good months that we could enjoy it. So you really can't sit out there and enjoy food, drink, because this sticky, gummy type material just takes over the space. So we really have taken a long time in the eight years that we've been there to think about this. We're very considerate of the design and the style and the scope and the scale so that it's balanced with the rest of the house and surrounding the neighborhood. It fits in. We're trying to make it look like it's always been there, as well as, you know, being able to mitigate this drop. So these are the photos that basically just show you exactly what it looks like when it's filled. So I think I have a number of photos. Next. And this is this material, the close-up. Next. And it just continues to be a problem. Even if we clean it up, it's not clean for very long. In the last. So I think that just about explains, you know, we tried to be, the design to be contiguous to the house and be thoughtful and not overbearing in any way to the rest of the neighborhood. So, but we just feel like since we don't have a yard, that this is our space outside. We'd like to be able to enjoy it. The seasons are short, so if we put a structure on it, we feel like we can use it year-round.
Very good. Anything else that's worth adding?
No, I think we just would like everyone's approval.
Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. And with that, sir, did you want to add anything over?
No, thank you.
Okay, we'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go with public comment. Anyone in the room who wishes to be heard, just kindly raise your hand. We'll invite you to take the mic and share your thoughts, anyone. Seeing no hands and noting the record that there are no participants online to raise their hand, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion and go to questions from the board. And we'll begin with Mr. Swan.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The, I wonder if you could put up a zone matrix? Let me try to stand up and put it on here. The lot coverage, you're currently a little under the 25% lot coverage of 23.7, and you're going to 27 by putting this roof on the structure, which is, I guess, what triggers, maybe more of a question for the planning department, but this, I think is what triggers this as a request for a variance rather than a special permit, right?
Correct.
And the roof is covered. It's the roof. The pergola doesn't count right now.
The pergola, yeah, it counts.
Then if you put a roof on it.
Correct. And it counts as?
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage? Okay. Okay. The problem is with the variance, there are technically a few requirements, you know, it's an odd-shaped lot, but that's a rectangle. So I guess the next question is, are there slopes? I guess there aren't the extreme slopes there. This is more of a flat thing.
Yes.
How about soil conditions? Are there like swampy areas or anything?
No, sir. And we have gravel in, along the whole fence between our gutters and behind our, and around the perimeter.
Okay.
So I have photos of that if you'd like to see it, but we sit up high. So naturally, we have a stone wall and then there's gravel, and so we sit up high in the street, but there are no slopes. It's dry.
I just want to make sure I understand that. Caitlin, could you put up the site plan, please? The site plan lists a couple of the gutters here. We did get a letter back on August 21st from Jill Payson, who I think is your gutter, just to the requesting that, I have it here, it was a very short letter. Is it possible to have a new roof line lowered so that our view of the trees and green space on Woodland Street are not impeded? So I guess, has there been any change to your plans since she sent that letter?
No, sir. And I do have some answers for that.
Okay, go ahead.
If you'd like to see them.
I'd like to hear.
So I wanted to make sure that there's so this is an, so what I did in regard to that is, I went over and I asked her because I wanted to, you know, sleep up to the balcony. So this is her view from the edge of her deck. She'll be standing up her deck at 34 inches above the finished ground. And so as she stands there, she sees the deck and that's it. And that was unanimous that she was questioning. So as you get further and further back, she has been feeding. So this is 15 of these racks that are standing between here and there. So one thing she asked about was the trees on Woodland. So the majority of these trees are non-woodland. They're on the Carlton and Collins. So they're not really directly on Woodland. They're likely the edge of one. I wanted to make sure.
I thought we were part of a trajectory, apparently, seeing what happened there.
So then, in addition to that, I just carried that further. This is if you're sitting on her deck. This shows that it's a bone-to-finish board on our property. And this thing of butter, it did tell us that they were going to put up a six-story fence. So that's just the statue, but it thinks that, and we really like it. So.
I think it's funny, we just wanted to note for the record, it's a little hard for one of our remote members to understand what you're referring to, so I'm up here with the speech to officials if they've already gotten as well.
Yes, yeah. So if you look at Payson Street and you see the house right behind our rectangle, yellow rectangle, and that is an extended porch deck, the roof in the back of her yard. So what her concern is, is that when you stand at the edge of her deck, which is 34 inches above the finished ground, that's her fifth step up to the deck. She can see trees. She can see trees directly across, and the trees that she's referring to are beyond Woodland. They're not these trees here, they are on Collins Street, and, well, Carlton's the first, and then Collins. So I asked her if I could take some photos so I could see what she's, you know, concerned about. And I just wanted to indicate what her view was, standing at the edge, moving fifteen feet back, and then sitting at the per, on, perching on her sectional seating that's on that deck. So what she can see and, you know, how much she's losing in between. Now, these rectangles obviously aren't to scale, but it indicates the trees that she's concerned about. So I was just making for the record that those trees are beyond Woodland. And there are quite a few obstacles when you're sitting there that you have to, your eye goes beyond her garage and her, and then the second page, I just show what it's like, what she's, what worth being from our side as to what, where her steps are in relationship to our property. So it, it just is the relationship of that. So I wanted to be sympathetic to that and understand what her concern was. So.
We got this letter from her on, on August twenty-fourth.
Yes.
And you spoke with her after that, or?
Yes. Well, when I, when Caitlin posted it.
Yeah.
I went over and, and I asked her if I could see what she was concerned about.
She say she's now okay with it, or?
And she didn't say.
Okay, because we did not receive anything, so.
Okay.
All right, we also got a letter from your butter, you listed your, your, about your butter to the north, but your butter, so you're still at Southland there.
Yes.
And they were concerned, I guess their land is somewhat wet, and they were concerned about more runoff coming. You mentioned a gutter system on your plan.
Yes, there will be a gutter.
Where, where would that discharge its water?
Well, that, first of all, the footprint will be less, so it'd be further away from the fence, but the gutter will tie into our sustain gutters on our house, and it will drain away from any of those areas. And we also, I mean, again, I just, we have gravel, we have gravel.
Can you go to talk to the manager?
Yeah, okay, so we have, we have gravel that runs firmly north-south rectangle, that yellow rectangle, that the line, we have gravel that runs all the way down. We have a demise, we have a fence there with both of us. And so, um, our water, or any of the rain, you know, whenever it gets over there to that fence line, which is just beyond the pergola, there's gravel. So that, it's a lot of gravel.
So that's the longer line.
Yes.
With Jill Gross on Payson's area?
No, on Woodland Street, because this is Beth and Jay, Delisle, that were concerned about the water.
Right.
So, um that's the, that's how, you know, just letting you know that we have at least three and a half, four feet of gravel all the way down that, that fence.
Along their property.
Yeah, along our.
Did I show you on the map where?
Yeah, maybe that.
So it goes, this is our, no, this is our shed.
Yeah.
We have gravel, we, we put the gravel in ourselves, two of us did. It goes here, it goes all the way down here, all the way here, and all the way up there. And then it also goes in front of pergola here, and around here, and all the way here, and around there, like that, all the way around that. And it's anywhere from eighteen inches to two feet wide.
Could you point to where your gutter on this proposed roof would be, take, very good water to on that map, could you?
Well, the gutter system will tie back in to the roof and will probably drain at the intersections of our existing roof.
And the new roof.
And the new roof.
I see.
Right? And I, maybe I could show better on the elevation.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah. So, um yeah, we've never had any water issues, and when she came over, you know, she said, maybe, I said, well, of course, there are gutters, and we, we have gutters, and I would not only have gutters, and that's, gonna make it clean for everything, and, um.
If I may. My understanding was because I, the, the owner, they were resettled, the other side, the Delisle, I reached out, my understanding is they're concerned and preface is, if at all possible, to make sure that it's clear, either from the plans or from a condition that the gutter or the drainage from the roof is directed away from that property line. So in either case, I think that what my understanding, what you were looking for was confirmation in some way, or a condition if necessary to make that clear, that the drainage from the roof would not be directed via gutter towards that, a muddy lot line.
Okay, and can we put, make that a provision?
I think we do that something that the board could do.
We can.
Yeah, so that, it's noted that we would definitely comply with that, so.
I mean, that's like an easily resolvable condition.
Yeah.
Depending on who that works for you, that that's something that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and, and we, I iterated that as well.
I don't have any more questions. Great, and thank you, thank you both for your.
Do you, can you explain the reference?
We have, have you submitted anything?
No, that would be good for saying.
We'll take a quick copy, thank you very much.
There's one copy we, that's one, and that's sweet.
Well, okay. Mr. Chen?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I guess, I guess the first thing to note is the, what do you call this new structure? Do you call it a roofed deck?
I'm, I'm just saying it's a hip roof over a patio.
Okay, roof over patio, so it's smaller than the existing pergola, which is great. I was doing the math to try and see what it would take to get you back down with twenty-five percent lot coverage, and they'd only be allowed seventy square feet.
Yes.
Which is seven by ten, a closet by multiple measurements.
Right.
So the fact that we're putting a roof over this is, is damming as far as it goes toward a variance. The other thing I noted is the new roof over deck is not centered on your existing building. So one roof line is gonna be clean, and the other one's gonna be stepped back three or four feet. And feet, like on the bottom line.
Yes, because of the hip, yes.
Well.
Down the front, it's contiguous, right?
Right, and the other side, it's not. So the whole thing with drainage, I think we'll have to be careful with is, the right side looking at this drawing is no problem because you've got a gutter system over on that side, that's the other side, you'll have to make sure it leads away from your neighbor's backyard, if, if this were to go through.
Well, then, yes, because they're on this side.
And they're towards us.
Yes, they're on this side, but, yes, on the north side, it will have to tie back in, definitely.
And it would, it would look silly to have two downsides next to your.
Oh, there's, and there's also at least three feet of gravel.
Right.
With an edging around it that we had, we put in.
Right.
And then a, and then a fence, there's a fence, a wooden fence that, two feet into the ground, that divides.
So that will stay, all the gravel will stay as is.
And, and the other thing, when we got the note from the, a butter above the roof, I looked back, what it would take to lower the roof, and you almost can't. Can you go to the previous print? Yeah, they've already got it stepped down quite a bit, if you were to try and lower that, four feet, you'd end up with a, you could lower the pitch, it would be really hit by crazy. Or you'd go to, if you go to two low slopes, it'd force them into a rubber. He worries. So we're kind of in a pickle.
Well, the hip is sort of the lowest profile to.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Swan was saying is you could even, you could slope that even more, but you'd still only get it down a few feet. I mean, the, the little addition off to the side, that nineteen, this roof, I think is seventeen, that they wrote down, yeah, seventeen four, you might get it down to fifteen or fourteen, but you won't get it down to ten. I mean, uh it's eight or, eight or nine feet off the ground. You have to go to a flat. Um, no, I have no other questions, I think, I think your drawings and your explanation explains everything, and Mr. Swan said the top side of the variance, one of the first things we have to consider is either conditions and circumstances that are unique to your lot, structure of a building, that doesn't apply to other people. That is twenty-five.
Well, the back part of it is the driveway, so that's the only part.
Down, you shrunk it, it kind of makes you out thinking that it's probably as small as you could get away with and have it usable.
Yes.
I mean, thirteen by thirteen, no one would ever argue that that's a big structure.
Yeah. I, we want it to look intimate, modest.
Yeah.
And not screaming, I mean, we wanted to look proportionate, scale is very important, especially in this situation.
I've got all the questions here. All right, thank you, Mr. Chen, and thank you, as well, for that. Mr. Chen, any questions?
Yes, my question is, what is the square footage of the patio? I might have missed that.
The new square footage, one-seventy thirty.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the setback, of course, is measured from the implied wall plane, the columns. So I'm thinking, are we in fact also contemplating maybe an addition with a fireplace and chimney, rather than just a roofing over of this outside space? To me, it looks like as much an extension of the house than, you know, as, as a refining of kind of the yard space. And I'm, yeah, I am also thinking about the potential drainage issues that, that were mentioned. I think, would you be able to return with a plan that shows the gutters and addresses the drainage concern directing the water away from the lot line?
Yes, I mean we, I mean, I'd ask for it to be a provision, so yes, of course.
I guess I'm also, yeah, I'm struggling with the, with the hardship finding as well, so I guess that, you know, my, my question for now was about the size of it and, and just sharing what's on my mind for others on the board, but I don't have another specific question, thanks.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chen. I don't have any additional questions that haven't already been addressed either, and I appreciate Doug Wordingpin's taking a moment to so inclined with respect to drainage, and, and just explain some of the other details that were questioned by members. So unless there's any further questions, I want to close that portion of public hearing, and we'll just go into our deliberations, and again, we're deliberating the legal criteria for a variance, so we'll just ask the members, kind of the tailor deliberations around that criteria, although I believe that we've, you know, I believe that Swan's already gone into some of that detail with respect to hardship, so can you go ahead and kick things off?
Sure, well, the problem is, we don't see a lot of variance, usually we get special permits. You have a variance here because your house, like any house this is due report, is not conforming in several ways, but you're creating an additional nonconformity by, by going from a house that's conforming with your coverage to one that's now nonconforming. So that puts a much higher bar for us. And if, if the lot fit one of three criteria, if it was a very unusual lot, you know, kind of like high shape of a piece going over here or something, or if it was a very heavily sloped lot, you had a really tough time working with, or your soils were, you know, a third, two-thirds of it was swamp land, you could only go in one area, but none of those things exist here. So we have a situation where there's not really a strong legal basis to grant a variance. And the problem is, you know, part of the problem in my mind, if we were granted variance, and a butter was an issue, it easily get it knocked out. And we already know in a butter, absolutely roof be lowered, and the roof has not been lowered. So it's, it just gets really tough when you're working very, very close to a butter, if a butter does. And it's, so I, you know, I started off by thinking, well, they have pergola, they just want a roof line. But there's a trigger to variance, and then it became a different animal. And then when we had one a butter, then a second, and a second a butter, I think it was pretty clear that if there was a condition that the drainage went elsewhere, it sounded like it would be okay with it, and I think we can probably work that through. And you've already said it'd be amendable to that, so I'm not as worried about the second a butter. Anyway, so that's, that's my concern about the legal situation here, it's rare for us, it doesn't meet the three, one of the three lot criterias. And we have a butter with an objection, but it's, it makes it difficult to, in my mind, others may disagree, I'm like, you know, my colleagues have to say, it's like, I mean, it makes it hard to grant variance this way.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chen?
Yeah, you know, I think if we look at the four criteria for variance, first one being the unique, consplot or structure, soil conditions, neighboring lands, that's the one I think we're all struggling with. The other three, I think we're okay with, strip application would deprive the applicant of reasonable use, unique conditions and circumstances after the result, the applicant, yeah, and during the creative conditions. And we leave with the, that, this one kind of goes back to one a little bit, if it could grant a special permit, should be verified in the affirmative. So I guess one of the things I wanted to go back to was when this was filed, this was a, this was not a variance.
It was determined initially, I don't want to speak for the zoning administrator, but I think it was determined to be a special permit, that then was determined, a further review, that a variance was being triggered by it, so the initial assessment was a special permit.
Did we, sorry, did the zoning administrator write finding that's, that tells us why it went from a, because we, when someone puts a portico over the front door, we don't include that. I don't think, we haven't, at least in the past, had square footage for lot coverage.
As an, as an entryway, an accessway, necessary direct way to the structure.
Right.
Maybe different than this, to be fair.
Right, well, okay, so if they were to put a door, which I assume there is a door, is there a door up to this?
No.
Seth?
No, no. It's the posts, it's not, it's the.
They would put a door there.
Can I tell you?
They would a door, does it, does it take away the calculation?
It's the posts. It's the, it's the posts. The determination of zoning administrator, even on an entryway.
Yeah.
If you have brackets, it doesn't count.
Like corbels and overhangs.
That's right, if there are brackets and an overhang, it doesn't count to lot coverage.
As soon as it goes down.
As soon as it goes down, it counts to lot coverage.
Okay. So that's how we've not, we, I know, because we've had a couple of porticos overhangs, we don't count.
Well, they're not being enclosed, essentially, you're, you know.
No, but I think the point is that if it were to say cantilever, cantilever, right, then the projection is not, if you were to create like a virtual geometry, yeah, from that projection and drop it down to the earth, you wouldn't count that, you know, phase, you drop it down where, where its support structure is. So that's, you know, that's a design sort of architectural curiosity, right? But that, what we're, what we have before us is a geometry calculation based on, on lots of the structure, that's.
But we also know that it started as a special permit and somehow morphed, so I was just trying to find out what the genesis between the morphing was. Because that's the one thing we're struggling with, is the fact that the variance, we took away the variance, the same with fly, I think.
Well, let's, 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 yeah, let's continue the deliberations, not to short circuit.
Yeah.
Any further deliberations while, if there's anything else to add, I can circle back to.
No, no, I, I think based on the true reading of, you know, the ordinance, we are all struggling with the first point, that there's no unique structure, land, anything that allows us to make the first bullet.
Well, okay, and, and if you come up with one, please.
Share it with us, and I'm thinking, let me go, let me go around the board first.
We have done that too.
Patricia, Mr. Pecking, do you what are your thoughts as we get into these deliberations?
Yes, I'm, I'm not persuaded that there is an exceptional and undue hardship here.
So you're, you are, you're toiling with the hardship criteria, not so much even the first problem. Okay, so you're really, okay, very good. Was there anything else before I kind of?
No, nothing else. That's it for now.
Great. I mean, I'll just say this. I mean, I certainly, you know, get it. It's the unfortunate circumstance of the rigor of our code and our adherence to it seems draconian sometimes, you know, that we have to be so robotic in this, but, but alas, that's sort of our charge. We do, however, take a, you know, human approach to understanding and reading the landscape, no pun intended. And, and that's some what you heard from, from Mr. Shannon, I mean, sorry, Mr. Swan in particular, with kind of provocative questions about the soil conditions, the topography, the slope. The reason for some of those questions was to try to understand the uniqueness, at least its satisfaction potentially of one of those four prompts, though it seems that that alone doesn't necessarily carry the day with all vendors. One of our members mentioned the hardship criteria, which can't be self-inflicted or financially, et cetera. But you know, as I look at this sort of big picture and zoom out, I, I do, I believe, I, I mean, is it fair to say that part of why you're covering this, I thought you had mentioned there was some drainage issues. Some, some, you know, water issues. I know at least one of the avatars had mentioned that runoff. Is that something particularly impacting your lot here? Is that why you're covering this?
So this is the first I've heard. Other than my conversation with Beth, we've never had drainage
Nope.
issues on, you know, off of our property, because
Is it stylistic? And pardon me, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just, before I forgot, I dovetailed that question. I I don't, don't be a second B. The reason to cover it is that stylistic, architectural, in nature, or is there some other?
Well, the nuisance of that tree has prevented us from using that space. So it becomes an ongoing nuisance to us.
The tree is not on our property.
Well, the tree is on our property.
Well, it's on the other side.
But it's on the other side of the fence. So you know, we're, we're trying to save the trees and be considerate, but we also know that we can't use that space. So we thought, well, long and hard about coming up with a design that will allow us to use that space year round.
The, the tree, you happen to know what kind of tree it is?
It's a linden tree.
Oh, you'd mention that. And it's particularly
May, June, it's like snowy. It's it costs us more to have it cleaned up from than what the roof will cost.
He's already got that in the
All right. I appreciate that. So, you know, my thinking, and I don't know whether this, and I'm not trying to be I'm not trying to be manufactured in, you know, in this thinking out loud. And I certainly am not trying to generate the, you know, the retention satisfaction of any of the criteria, but we've been doing this a long time. Some of us, I'm, I'm you know, I shudder to admit longer than others, right? So I've seen, we have seen a lot, we've heard a lot, we've toiled and tussled with a lot of lots of structures flying between our neighbors, yourselves currently included. When we deal with this criteria, we take a human approach, or at least I, I do, and I think I'm no exception with my colleagues. And when we run it through this lens of, like in this instance, the one problem that at least I can speak to, and I, again, I can't say, I, I'm not speaking to the hardship issue, which is a whole separate issue. And again, you understand all four of us must vote the affirmative for this to carry, for that to carry the day. Just to speak out loud, though, with respect to the conditions and circumstances unique to the applicant's larger structure that do not apply to the neighboring lands. You know, we could look to hydrology, slope, topography, soil conditions. And, you know, we have, I don't know, is a tree that grows in the soil an extension of the soil condition that's unique to this property with a specific species that creates that issue? I, I don't, it's, it's a reach probably, but it's not nothing. We, we, we try to consider everything. But my colleagues are correct, I think, in my estimation, due to their judgment, which is that we are struggling with the rigor of the criteria that we must run all of this through. This does not even, even if we were to surmount that. Even let's say if I was able to, if there was buy-in, buy-in between everyone with respect to that, it still doesn't change the hardship issue, or at least one of the members struggles perhaps intermittently with that. So I, you know, I would be able to support it. You know, with, I mean, I certainly think that if we can address the runoff issues, at least some of it is supportable, at least by me, I think I can support it. I don't think that that matters because I think that you, you know, you have few other issues that, at least a few of the members that voiced. I say this out loud, only because we don't practice, you know, zoning by ambush here. So we want to give you the opportunity to record this out loud before we take a vote, which is a sort of an irreverent step that could place you, you know, sort of outside the walls for a period of years, you know, before you come back before us unless you changed it. To give you an opportunity to perhaps try to revisit this, take a step back. We certainly don't love to try to fill our docket with, you know, a revisitation, but again, we are simply you, just on this side of the table by, as appointed citizen members of the volunteer board. And we live the work. So we try to be very thoughtful and pragmatic as well as try to do our job as we're, as we understand it. So, you know, you have a few challenges, and I think they've heard most of them. I want to just hear from the members of the board once more before we kind of pose a question to you, which will include, would you like us to take, you know, to take a vote? Like, let's start with just one more move to see if there's any other thoughts. But those are my thoughts and deliberations, just to hear what everyone's saying. Mr. Chen? Sorry, I, I thought, I thought, I didn't raise, we have, we don't know.
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm still
I, I, I have just one question with this. The problem is, you're triggering your variance by going over the coverage. Is that shed included in the coverage that they have?
Yes.
They have to be. How big's the shed? How big is the shed? I'll bring that shed to you. And just think
Well, we don't have a garage, so we don't have any other places to store anything. So that was there, I mean, you're in.
So If you were to, you asked for a vote tonight and you lose, you can't come back for two years.
Can we cut the tree down?
It's on, I don't, I'm not an expert in trees, but I think you can cut the branches that overhang in your yard.
But I mean, we've done that and
But, but just let me follow her, finish for a second. If, if you were to figure out how to get the coverage so it doesn't trigger a variance, so maybe you lose your shed, or you make the thing a little smaller, some boat, and you somehow had your neighbor a little happier, maybe you made us didn't have the roof pitch quite as high as the rest of your house, but less, and, and your Jill Rose said, I'm fine with that now. And you identified where your drainage was, then if you're not triggering your variance, your neighbors aren't up and down, you know, I wouldn't say up and down, just going on, aren't sending us letters of objection. And it'd be much easier for us to prove it. But my, my issue is they're asking for a variance, and variances are, we don't approve very many variances. We just don't.
Nope, yeah.
So anyway, I, that's what I wanted to add.
No, wait, you're starting that shed.
And I realize this shed is important to you, but
Pardon me?
I realize the shed is important too to you, but it might be maybe you could make a trade-off. I, I can hand you the math on hand here.
I think, and, and I agree with Mr. Swan, and I'll just dovetail this. You know, we don't approve very, very many variances, but it's not because we see it as some no-fly zone, but rather because the criteria is very steep and it's, and it's rigor is, you know, is, is very steep, right? So we find that it's a, it's a hard road to hoe. So if you meet that criteria, if it, to be quite honest, especially with respect to this notion of hardship. But I think, you know, I think Mr. Swan brings up a good point with respect to alternatives in design, which is right in your wheelhouse, and I don't oppose to to, you know, a peer review of your design. But if you cease to have a rigid structure in coverage of the roof of that pergola, but rather some, you know, hence titled soft coverage
An awning?
that, that deploys out and retracts in or something, I don't know, you, you would like to be more creative than certainly I. But once you did that, you're no longer in the commutation. So, and there are, you know, I've seen these, I've seen this execution in our built environment with respect to pergola that have, you know, so it's sort of semi-permeable, but water, you know, water resistant shading. I don't know whether those are options, you know, pruning the tree, you know, piloting the tree, maybe, I don't, I don't know what I wanted you to hear, I think we wanted you to hear what we're up against. And then films, and, and I want to ask, you know, Mr. Shannon, if you wanted to have anything. But then I'm going to come back to you and, and, you know, we just don't want you to find yourself having a vote if, if you want to take a sharp, respectful stance, but we're happy to do that setback. But any
I was interested in your approach of the tree, but I couldn't, I still couldn't get my tires out of it. It's getting close.
Well, it doesn't sell, it, it's curative, but not curative.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, not without, not with four of us, we at least had one. And, and, you know, we should, yes, Ms. Ms. Pecking, I mean, we're kind of talking about you while you're in the room. Right? We, I should, I also as, as our member, and, and I don't know whether others share your sentiment, but you're the one who voiced it, and the only one who voiced it, but you're not necessarily the only one who feels it and thinks it with respect to a lack of hardship or your inability to get there. Any, any different or new thoughts, having heard and participated in all of our, you know, all of these deliberations? Does anything change for you with respect to hardship? Are you essentially, you know, still where you shared it were?
Yes, I'm in the same place in regards to hardship, and I think that the comments of other members of the board have been very thorough and very fair, and I appreciate the the feedback that's being given to the applicant about possible ways to get this down to a special permit, which would be much easier for us to handle in a way that the applicant would be happy with at the end of the day.
Okay. And thank, can I, yeah, go ahead.
You're done.
Yeah, Mr. Patricia, was that it? I was, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
Yes, yes. No, I don't. Thank you.
Chen, yeah, I, I guess, you know, jumping off some of the ideas that have been thrown around, you might be able to work with the zoning administrator to find out what would cause this to not require a variance. As an example, if it was a hundred percent cantilever, there was no post in front of it, holding it up, magic would have to hold it up, I understand. This would, this would go back to being a special permit.
Which is where it was for a long time.
Life would want it. I did the math, if the posts were only five feet from your house, and then the rest of it was cantilevered, so you'd be cantilevering seven feet. That would also keep it in the special permit case. So let's go a little bit further. What if you brought the posts out to ten feet and got rid of your shed? So you have a three-foot cantilever. It may then, you'd have to work with the zoning administrators. I don't know if it's the footprint of the deck or the footprint of the post to your house. I don't know how they're calculating that. Do you know?
Well, I'm going to get a deference from the zoning administrator here, but my, your point is being calculated as part to those posts.
The posts.
Right, tangibly.
So the closer the posts get to your house, smaller it becomes.
Right.
And you might be able to pull this back into twenty-five percent. Twenty-five point four nine, thank you, is twenty-five.
I mean, it's, it's, we did kind of like, I mean, that's why it's smaller, like
Understood.
Too small, it would sort of defeat its purpose.
But no, I don't
Yes.
Not trying to shrink the footprint of it, just trying to shrink where the post
Post guard, to support it.
Because the posts are only there to hold the roof up. Right?
Right.
I, if I could, and I don't want to presuppose anything on behalf of the zoning administrator, but I, I don't, I'll defer, I don't know whether she'll be able to make the conclusion that by pulling those posts in, did that alleviate the other portion of it being calculated?
Right. I don't know that either.
To, to, so is that reason, if nothing else, it certainly would seem to make sense to have potentially a follow-up, you know, discussion of what, you know, potentially you could do on your end. We could talk to the zoning administrator about that interpretation, but how that would be applied here. But I, I don't know that she, that, you know, if it lets you be able to reduce that area somehow because being covered.
Right.
I don't know if you're able to get away with that variance. So I think the board is right that it's difficult for the board to, under the statute, one, one could essentially argue that the board is not authorized to grant a variance based on the absence of, of a group hardship that's meeting the case law. So
Jennifer explained that to that
Sure.
the difference between the two, because that's how we started with the non-conform. So, I mean, I do understand the rigorous
Sure. I think it's easier as you're, you're going over the baseline allowance of the zoning, and it's a new non-conform fee that's being added, and it wasn't there previously, right? That's the, the issue that is raised by this application that's definitely brought back, so.
And it's small. You know, it's two percent, but
Yeah, it's two percent.
Yeah.
You know, it goes somewhere, yeah, we, I understand that. But I also think that, you know, if the tree weren't there, then we wouldn't probably have that issue.
Who's, who's, you said the tree's on your property?
We had, we had
So the tree is, is on our property line, but it's on the other side of the fence. It's on the
It's on their side of the fence.
So it's on the neighbor's?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But
You cut the branches though.
And we have kept the branches, but it doesn't keep anything from dropping.
You offer to take it down if they agree?
Well, I'm going to.
I did that with my neighbor, I said, this, I'll take it down.
Well, that, yes, because that would help to solve a lot of the issues, keeping it open. I'm willing to do that, but you can't sit out there with what goes on.
Right.
And, you know, it would approach a different design. So yeah, I mean, we took the tree out, that would help to eliminate the nuisance. And then, you know, we could go from there, but but, you know.
Well, hopefully you're reading into what the board is saying.
Yeah.
I think if you
Yeah, I mean, I, we want, yeah, we just want to use that space, so
You know, I'm, if United States not moving, I'm just going to get in trouble when I get out.
We hope, we hope.
Yes. The drainage issue with the avatars on the backside of the house is very acceptable. But I have an issue with the fact that they set up a ice skating rink in the backyard for kids and drain it into their yard, and then an above-ground pool in the summer and drain that into their yard.
Into your yard?
Into their yard. So if they have a drainage issue, why are they doing those two things? They have an ice skating rink that's at least twenty-five yards long, that gets drained into their property, flooded and drained. And then they have an above-ground pool that gets drained into their yard. No, I, I don't, I'm at this point now where
Russell.
And the other, on the other side, Jill.
That's not why we're here.
If you look at the trees that she is requesting that she can keep track, like, see them? It's basically the top twenty feet of some trees that are three streets away. And it's as if she's asking us to block her view of the grid in. All right.
No, no, this is, and these are
I'm at a point
Russell.
It doesn't matter to me.
It's, um, right, folks, seriously, um, it's perfectly fine. This is, this is, this is what we do, and, you know, no one ever suggested to us when we signed on that there wasn't always
And as far as taking away our shed, if we, if we, if we were to take away our shed.
No, sir, hold on.
Stop.
Let me, let, and don't be for a moment, and I say this with great respect. I, I hear you and we feel this. We are, as I've mentioned before, and I need this, we are simply you, except tonight, on this side of the board. So, so every bit of what you say, we feel, understand.
Okay, well, let me say one more thing.
Yes, I, but I'll say, let me, let me just say this. The, the, no one is making anyone get rid of a shed. It's, we're simply thinking out loud.
I would think you were, but if we were to get rid of our shed, which has our snow blower and wheelbarrows, then we would look like the two neighbors that are giving us the grievances right now.
I, I
Because they have shit like that in their yard everywhere.
Awesome.
Our house is immaculate. Our house, my wife's a designer. This place is immaculate on that corner. It has tripled in value since you signed off on it eight years ago. And all we're asking is to put a roof on top of something that will make it even more worth.
Agreed. We, I
So
I, I too live in a house without a garage, so I, I
I I too live in a house without a garage so I I particularly empathize with the old shed and the need to have it I think what we're saying is not necessarily we're saying
I understand the variance I understand all that
but but we're not saying no we're saying what we're saying is that um we don't want to say no tonight um and inadvertently put you in a bind with the greatest respect to your neighbors their comments whether they rise and fall on their merits uh and meet with our approval or buy-in is is a is a a toil for another night but
well what I'm getting at you can't take if they're grievances even they're they're not even like related
let me let me just ask you I I listen to you with respect I just ask you maybe only that same courtesy and I will listen to you again I I don't want to cut you off so I I will do everything in my power to I hear you we hear you um we're thinly and we do this and it's because we dive in headfirst to try to make sure that um there are creative ways to try to do something that on its face seems fairly routine and from a design standpoint we get it at least I I don't see any of my colleagues having said anything to the contrary it's a lovely design it makes sense we toil with something that you are you you um have the the you know you don't have to worry about from your standpoint we have to run this through the lens of of a code then right that we all have to deal with and we deal with it but we also try to apply real world sort of empathy and um and rigor and uh so that's sort of what we do I hear what you're saying I think that that's shared by my colleagues I would want you to consider um requesting a continuance so that you can speak with the planning office and take a sharper pencil to what might be done or doable to liberate yourselves from the rigor of the variance to uh receive back to the more liberal criteria of a special permit and then come right back to us with the same design um having relieved us as members of the board from the the criteria that seems to be an obstacle for us see no one here has said um that they don't get the common sense of what you're requesting we do this night in night out um some of us for years many years so we take into account neighbors but they do not uh you know they're not um they're not a witness that that makes something succeed or fail they're just simply a dateable that we take into consideration and we take everything into consideration but because you have an objection of the neighbor doesn't mean that you must overcome it in its entirety it just means that it's part of the stew that we have to consider uh so we share that with you for what it's worth I will give you the opportunity to um to have you know ask us and of course it sounds like you're gonna need to so we will entertain that continuance
yes
I want to give you enough time to rethink this um
yes
now Mr. Worthy I I promised you I wasn't gonna cut you off I'm gonna give you one last moment but then I'm gonna I'm gonna keep it real real short because if any of you want to add anything
no he's done please
sounds like your counsel has is is asking you that
please
to be done but I I want to give you the you know but I just want to make sure
I apologize for
no go apology anyway let's let's um let's do this let's let's take understand
there's more to this than
okay Russell
yes
why don't we um why don't we consider the
please
um do we have a motion to continue and I'm sorry is there a particular date why is it put that question why would you like to come back I would say give yourselves a month
that's fine
okay so
thank you October tenth
October tenth
yes that's fine
okay October tenth um and we will um will allow this unless there's something else on it we can have this be referred out
okay
um so this way you'll
I understand
okay Mr. Worthy good thank you um okay we have a motion to continue
I will make the motion that we continue
that's very good um uh Miss Petting you gave it second we're gonna have you seconded um Mr.
I seconded
seconded by Mr. Petting uh on the motion to continue um uh calling the role uh Mr. Fuang
yes
Mr. Chen
yes
Miss Petting
yes
and Rob Chen there yes that's four in the affirmative on the motion to continue to October tenth um uh the I T A motion carries and the matter is continuing to October tenth thank you folks and we'll look forward to seeing you on the tenth very good um okay moving now to our next application uh on our agenda this evening we have uh this is the application uh by Peter Newton care of Lisa Mead Mead Talaman Costa LLC the application address is six Julia Street this is a special permit for non-conformities um to the applicant see some necessary permits uh to renovate and upwardly extend the property's pre-existing non-conforming debt may be here for the applicant attorney me
thank you Mr. Chair and members of the board Lisa Mead Mead Talaman Costa thirty Gray Street here reporting uh with me this evening is Ryan Clemmons my colleague um MPG Design is the architect on the project and they're unable to be with us uh but Peter Newton um is with us um as well as Shannon and um Peter owns the property at six Julia Street you have the next slide please so um the application is the chair indicated was a special permit for non-conformities uh the property is uniquely located on six Julia Street and one thirty-six Old Point Road and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about that in a minute uh we require permit because um the applicant wishes to um ex- replace the deck on the rear of the property extend it inward to the property and add a a spiral staircase outside with a small kind of perch second floor deck all these are exterior changes um property is located in the R three zoning district and the Plum Island overlay district um the property is non-conformity excuse me non-conforming because of its rear setback is seven point five feet over the easterly boundary um of the property uh there is an easement on record for that um for that encroachment and the rear yards excuse me and the side yard setback is eighteen point five feet um from the southerly boundary where twenty feet is required for both of them um the frontage on the property and we'll go over this in a minute when we see the site plan is seventy feet and seventy-two feet on Julia and Old Point Road respectively um it's not actually a corner lot there's kind of a tooth out of the middle of it and so you actually use the Old Point Road frontage at seventy-two feet as the front yard so it's a little confusing on the site plan um this is your favorite thing Mr. Swan when we turn things all around from the address um but it is um it that's so the front yard if you're thinking about it when we go through these pictures um is on Old Point Road but some of the pictures we describe as the orientation of the house just so you can see easier what we're talking about so if you go to the um next slide I will also say the property is uh absolutely conforming for lot area this is one of the more unique properties on the island it has fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven square feet where twelve thousand are um allowed it is also conforming uh well under the uh conforming for FAR um and you'll also be happy to know that there's no proposed new FAR being added to this project it's all it's all this deck area in the back so as you can see on the site plan that um Caitlin has put up there Old Point Road is off to your right so that's actually the front yard which is the garage on the property and as you go to the line opposite that that's the rear yard line and that's where you can see the encroachment that triangle over the neighbor's property in the back that's the rear yard so that's the seven and a half foot encroachment and then the side yard is the line at the top of this plant um that is currently at eighteen and a half feet but we're actually gonna go a little further towards the property line at fourteen and a half feet um but we are removing you can see that shed that's underneath the um the deck that's being added we're removing that shed um the good news about removing the shed is that the shed is built into the sand um and so that will be taken away and so the conservation commissioner could be um really happy about that um the new part of the deck you see wrapped around towards the inside of the property um and that's the new area of the deck and when we go through um the design drawings in a moment I'll explain them the second floor kind of perch that's gonna happen so if you go to the next slide please so just to get an idea so this is six Julia Street which would be the front of the house even though it's actually a side yard um this is the front of the house um there's a number of changes happening to this from the windows and the materials point of view but there's no structural changes happening to the house uh next slide please and here is the rear um where this deck is going to be uh replaced um and there will be a new deck added um and we'll go over that in a minute next slide please and then this is the um the other side of the house you can see the back deck there um slightly so um if you go to the next slide please um as I said the property owner proposes to rebuild and expand the pre-existing raised first floor deck to wrap around the southern corner of the home inward toward the center of the lot as I described construct a second floor deck above a portion of the si- a single-story addition in the rear it's only a really slight portion we'll show you that in a minute uh make an exterior connection of the spiral staircase to that kind of perch that's being created and um then because of the deck moving inward in the lot and because of the way the house is oriented on the lot uh the encroachment in the rear actually gets a little bit closer to that um which is actually a side block line um again there's no no new FAR uh there's no adjustments to the existing footprint new windows new siding repairing the chimney um but otherwise it's really all about the decks um next slide please so this was a colored plan it didn't come over very well but um this is actually our conservation commission plan we wanted to use it because you can kind of see the the um coloring shows a little bit about the addition in the back you can just see it a little bit better um so you can see the new deck in the back which is the same size as the um existing deck into the encroachment area um and then it starts to wrap around back as you recall from the photographs the existing deck in the back just is in the back but this one now wraps around to the outside to the interior of the lot um you can see the the shed being removed and that little piece in the back that goes back which is where accommodates the um the spiral staircase the front steps are actually being changed a little bit too um next slide please and here the side by side drawing so on the left you have the before photo um and on the right um this is the proposed elevation this is the front of the house on Julia Street right not the front yard but the front that actually when you drive in the driveway this is in front of Julia Street this is what you see so the only change you're gonna see here is that new deck in the back that comes off the side uh next slide please again uh here is the side of the house to the north um the changes on this again there are window changes uh but then you can just see the deck and the spiral staircase it is in this one um Caitlin if you can use your cursor and go uh you can see that little coverage on the deck there's a little right go up to the second floor right there there's the little area that's gonna become the second floor deck it comes out it's hard to tell on these flat plans but essentially at the top that spiral staircase you're gonna have a a perch up there next slide please and then here's the rear um and uh so here's how the deck works in the back and you have a staircase that goes off which is why you see the encroachment on the um side yard in the back next slide please again um here's the side of the house to the south um and you can see how the deck comes up onto the sock and the new deck comes out and dumps into the back area next slide please so as the board knows the two criteria under the Plum Island overlay district uh the first is that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pyot and the pre-existing non-conforming structure and that the proposed changes do not cause the structure to go within ten feet of any um side lot and the prop- the houses are more than two stories and thirty-five feet in height here um there are many um homes on Plum Island and in the neighborhood where um the deck there is a one two and three single-story homes um all within the pyot many of them have second floor decks or rooftop decks themselves in addition to first floor decks and patios for all of the obvious reasons to enjoy the outdoors on Plum Island um here as I said the applicant's proposal conforms to this neighborhood character uh it extends the first floor deck into the property except for that extension out the back where the stairs go um and the reason that's counted towards the rear yard is because it's more than uh three feet off the ground otherwise if we're lower of course it wouldn't we'd be allowed to extend into the side yard setback um the expansion uh will result in the removal of the shed which is a good thing uh for the island and um the second floor deck uh in the its extension the first floor deck actually matches surrounding homes uh the deck will meet the requirements for the conservation commission construction uh and again the shed will be removing it and as I noted earlier um the FAR is not being impacted at all go to the next slide please so here we have um our property right down at the bottom but you can see the surrounding properties where their decks are second floor decks small decks balconies uh this is not an unusual situation next slide please and again you can see the property in the middle there um again that that roof line's not changing footprint's not changing you can see the second floor deck in the front the foreground that brown house um and there's another second floor deck I think off to the left you can't really see in this photograph and there's one directly in the front on the right-hand side next slide please again uh just a shot of the neighborhood again it's good to see you can see there's the size of that shed that's being removed by the way it's not just a small shed it's a pretty good sized shed um and it's got a you can see that it's got a solid um foundation right so it's a it's a big deal to move that shed um but this is the side that the deck's gonna run around on and that's interior to the lot next slide please so based upon the modest extension of the existing non-conforming deck and the upward extension of the second floor deck which is quite small the construction of the changes in conformance of the conservation commission requirements the elimination of the non-conforming shed the construction of the deck using uh as I said the free allowing the free flow of water and air and sand through it uh no changes to the building footprint no increase in the FAR uh we think that the board can find that this proposed change is not substantially more detrimental to the pyot or to the neighborhood and then of course it also meets the second criteria which um we're not within ten feet and we don't see thirty-five feet and um it's not beyond two stories so with that we've requested the board approve uh the special permit for non-conformities and allow uh Mr. Newton to move forward with his debt construction
okay uh thank you attorney me um my computer died so I'm just gonna kind of owe your attention I should have brought the charger
okay um closing that portion of the public here and we will um go to uh public com- uh public comment I see that there are no attendees logged on uh but um anyone in the room who wishes to be heard uh attorney just raise your hand we'll recognize you we'll ask you to take the uh take the mic take the podium share your thoughts anyone seeing no hands uh I will again no attendees I will close the public comment section and you'll go into questions from the board and we'll begin with Mr. Fuang um could you put the site plan on
so um you know as you point out this is a a larger lot that we used to see on Plum Island um I just want to make sure I understand what's happening here so the footprint there for the building that's not changing right
no
and the footprint for the deck the first floor deck that's currently there is that changing
uh no that it's being replaced but not changing
okay
the excuse me Mr. Swan I want to be clear so the the existing deck is that first see where the arrow is uh right uh right that first block in the back of the house that's the existing deck
one that says deck
yeah and then it's extending to the right so right correct
so I I'm sorry so the the deck is unchanged in size or it's growing to the right
growing to the right that's why
if it's a squareish area it's been there's a line in the middle where the decks is a squareish area
that's the current deck
that's the current deck
correct
and and it spills over the property line and you have an easement for the deck and the whole tiny corner of the house there that's seven and a
that's correct
it spills into the
we have all of that
right on the left okay so the deck is getting larger and you're also asking for this doesn't show the swell where's how how big is the second floor deck
it's it's so it's really hard to say because it's small so you go up to the top of the spiral staircase and it's it's been described as a perch it's literally four or five feet long and about this wide it's really for somebody to go up and have a view maybe sit down
almost like a balcony it's like four and a half by two kind of thing
right
so it's like ten So it's like 10 feet or something.
Go up and have one chair.
Yeah, I see. Okay. So it's, these decks are very, very different aside.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
You know, usually we see proposals to increase and some of them go over the 25% coverage and I have all kinds of issues. I'm glad to see this one's not changing in a fragile environment of Plum Island, changing the coverage on the lot.
It doesn't change any of the lot coverage. I would say to you, I did the calculation. This, this lot legally under the zoning, not that it would be the best thing to do, could take another thousand's worth of legal space.
I see that. You have a lot of acreage here. Your butters. I did not notice any butters in the file here. Did you talk to the butters? Is there any input from your butters?
Yeah, we have talked to the butters. There's a couple of butters here. And they didn't speak against it and I think that's their choice, right? So, right, so they're, they've talked to all the butters.
All right. I don't have any other questions. I don't get them. Okay, thank you. Ms. Chen.
Yeah, the only real change to the zoning matrix that I saw was, I think it's this right side yard setback.
That's correct.
From the front.
That's correct.
That goes down by four feet.
That's correct.
That's the only big change, I guess, for us.
That's correct.
Because everything else is in compliance. No other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Ms. Pecking, any questions that you wish to pose?
No. Thank you to Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shagnon for their questions. And I do not have anything to add to those.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add in terms of questions either. So I'll close that portion of the public hearing and we will go into deliberations. And again, we're deliberating the criteria for a special permit for non-conformities. So we'll begin with Mr. Swanton.
Well, there's two criteria. The first is, does it create a new non-conforming? And it does not. So, final app. The second is, is it, there's a legal word for it. I'm not a lawyer. I'm like a sound here.
So stay in touch.
Is it potentially more detrimental for the neighborhood if the pre-existing non-conforming use is currently there, right? I mean, basically, it's the same footprint house. You're spanning the deck and adding a little perch above it. So I don't think on this large lot on Plum Island, it is substantially more detrimental. So I could support this application.
Thank you. Ms. Chen.
I have to agree with Mr. Swan based on the two criteria and this being a fairly modest change. Other than some people don't like spiral staircases, but I'm not one of them. I can support this application. Very good. And Ms. Pecking?
Yes, I can support it as well.
Thank you. I share the sentiment of my colleague.
I can.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, I just want to make sure you can hear me. Sometimes it's hard to hear you guys. I want to make sure you, you can hear me. Yes, I support it. Sorry.
No worries. Thank you very much. I shared that and have no, nothing further to add. I think it's very modest. I think it's well thought out. It's certainly in keeping with the neighborhood. So the fact that butters that, that have been noticed have taken time to appear this evening and not have voiced any objections or comments speaks volumes when it comes to any Plum Island application. So that is quite impressive and thank you for taking the time to speak with me here as well. Without any further deliberations, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and entertain a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for six Julia Streets, ENC 23-21.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chen. A motion made by Mr. Chen and it's seconded by Mr. Swan. Mr. Swan, calling, thank you, Mr. Swan, calling the role on the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities. Mr. Swan?
Yes, Mr. Chen.
Yeah. Ms. Pecking?
Yes.
And Rob Chambetti, I don't guess? That's four in the affirmative. I see that motion carries and the application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That closes our public hearings for this evening and with that, we will close public hearings and simply go into, we have one matter before us in the business meeting, which is approval of our minutes. Thank you very much, folks, for coming out this evening. Have a great evening. Approval of our minutes of eight, 22, 20, 23. Any comments? Any revisions for changes?
It was a very short meeting.
Eleven minutes. I'm like, all right, that's a record.
That is eleven minutes. I started at six minutes late that I could have waited for someone to join. I think it was technically like five minutes.
Patricia, any changes or comments on the minutes?
No, sir. No, sir.
I'm not re-approved them.
Yeah, motion is made to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Chen. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any additions, votes, or extensions? The I see that motion carries and it's approved. I have no additional updates and I just want to say one thing.
Sure. Which is, several meetings ago, I brought out a letter to the editor for the newspaper here, got people's comments after the item was withdrawn to the bureau hall in our last meeting and I submitted it the next day. The letter-writing policy of the paper says they might call you to verify stuff. So sure enough, I got a call the next day from Jimmy Sullivan. The next day, it was a front-page story and he never read my letter. And I called him a week later and said, what happened? And he said, that's the editorial department. We'll have to make that decision. And it's now, another week has gone by and I could, I could post it on Nextdoor or something, but I'm not going to. I just, I don't like picking up light with people who lie deep by the barrel, basically. And I've worked with the press for years and years and years. That was the old saying we used to have. I just said, this has never happened to me where I've submitted a letter to the editor and it hasn't been published, but I hear it's not unique. So I just want to let people know. Some people think I might, should just post it on their Facebook page or something, but I'm not going to. Just because I, I just learned from this experience and if that happens again, I won't.
I admire and commend your restraint. I want to thank you though for taking the time to write the letter. It's a shame, you know, it shares our sentiment, but, you know, we live to fight another day. But I, I think that, you know, you voiced and articulated the thoughts of all of us and took the, you know, took the lead to be the outside bandwagon on that and I appreciate it.
I do think that, thank you, thank you, Rob. I do think your story, it was 75% correct. So I was happy with, you know, they got the bulk of the key point that the city won, the parking issue, which was the big issue.
Yeah.
They put in there, which I was like.
Correct. That, that was important.
But anyway, that's all I have.
I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing it. Thank you for taking the time to write in this, edit. And I guess we'll just move on.
Very cool, man. And just real brief, the one is just that the city council, the extent it may come back to with a type of permanent. The city council will be just up to that matter again on September 21st in committee. So we'll see where that goes. September 21st, there is likely to be probably, I would imagine, just as what I've seen today. Maybe it continues to that meeting, but at some other date. So we may have to track it a little bit to where it goes.
You mean they might not even undertake the business of that meeting and just punch it out?
No, I think they'll discuss it that night, but they may have to continue that discussion to figure out where the consensus is only because we've done eight public hearings today and quite got to a finished line with this.
This, okay, great.
So if you're interested in following that, we'll obviously, you know, kind of track that ourselves. The other thing I was going to mention was, just in terms of, you know, we've been talking over years about trying to do the best of our ability to give our bandwidth, updates to the zoning ordinance, cleanup-type changes, things that are at date, you know, et cetera. One of the things that came up, I just wanted to quote this idea, you don't necessarily speak to it right now, but if you want to communicate to me and, you know, Caitlin and I, we can sort of circle back. A cleanup-type thing that might be appropriate, in my view, a little bit more of a housekeeping thing based on what I'm seeing in the zoning ordinance, what I've seen today. But where we have in the zoning ordinance, originally the zoning board appeals was going to the board granting these permits. And over time, you know, Rob has probably proven this more than I, because I use your long time. But some of the permits in more recent time have been given to the planning board, special permits, for instance. There's been a lot of continuity, what I would say, with sort of designating the special permit, granting authority for planning board on commercialized areas. And a lot of residential staying in the DVA. So one of the things that came to mind and I think it might be worth considering is making a little bit more clear, just thinking the ordinance that, you know, if you're in the residential districts, these are really, these are residential uses, ZVA kind of clean cut. But if you're, if you're in those commercialized areas, what we might be able to do is reduce the overlap between somebody going to, say, for instance, what happened when the downtown overlay district was adopted.
Correct.
The ordinance was established with the, provided though that the planning board, when we're doing an application in that district, would be the special permit granting authority in lieu of the zoning appeals. But I think that makes good sense and I think, you know, it's reasonable, I think, to contemplate doing that. Or say, you know, if you're looking at the commercial area around the one traffic circle, the story out of the area and recognizing that there's a good, maybe separation there where the ZVA can focus right around the residential pieces, maybe. And the planning board, given that it already had a lot of experience and will continue to kind of grow in that permitting area, maybe could focus on those. And that way applicants could have a clear sense of, you know, where they maybe go to in, might reduce the sometimes overlapping trades we have with the legislature board. There's what provisioned the ordinance, where it says in one section that, you know, we have to go to the DVA, but says that the applicant needs to go to both the ZVA and the planning board with the same permit, an odd provision footnote. But so that being the case, I just want to toss that idea around a few, if you want to think about it, certainly give me a thought now. Like, it'd be great to have your feedback on it because it might be something where we can tweak a little cleanup and just make it clear where we have those occasionally, something where someone is sent to both boards. It might be more streamlined and appropriate, in my view, permitting processes, you know, in terms of friendly permitting, to not send somebody to two different boards for the same application or same project. So.
I'd be in favor of that. I think sending anyone to two boards.
Right, right. I just don't see the benefit there. I don't see, you know, like, to me, I'd rather have one special permit granting authority and you're reviewing an application. So and to me, that makes a lot of sense, but I realize it's a, it's a, you know, each board has got to use those as a comparative area over time. So obviously it'd be.
It's a very rare, we do stuff in a commercial district.
It is, and that's why I see, to me, it's just a housekeeping thing to kind of say, look, we've already kind of established this. We have a few things that kind of get on the edge and you were just clarifying that nobody has to go to.
I think of them. I mean, I've.
Signs, yeah. Yeah. Right.
Right. Brian, you have the windows, yeah.
But how about a variance? That would still come to us. Because that would be a variance.
Right. You can't designate a variance, right?
That would still come. I thought that too.
Yeah. But also a special permit under the DCOD when it intersects with like mixed use.
So well, in that case, so for instance, when, this would be down in the finer gray language of what that caveat could say, but I think where we're talking about in the DVA area, that my intent or my thought with this was not to encompass the DVA, for instance, I would say with the DVA, those that are huge, you know, the residential area that these, you know, is involved. I was thinking more about trying to just capture it in like the downtown in the 4-yard district sort of area where this commercial, that there's no point in those commercialized areas where the planning board already has typically a site plan interview or a special permit or something that they might already.
I mean, it changes a bunch, but we don't do anything other than a couple of variances like Brian.
Yeah.
They don't do anything. And you don't change that.
I just, I don't want to, you know, I'm bringing it forward and I do, I don't want anybody to be sort of offended or like.
With signs, with signs for them in this commercial district?
Well, this is all open, you know, for discussion. I just.
That's not the only thing I think of that we do. It involves.
Yeah.
Commercial building.
I mean, I, my inclination is to say if the planning boards aren't reviewing, say, in the downtown overlay district, these other permits, to me, it makes more sense that the planning board also review if there's some sort of application out of the variance, where you can't correct variances to anything other than the sort of appeals. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't take out that here per se. But if someone's coming in for something in the special permit, I think it makes sense to keep that in a commercialized area with the board that's already doing that type of area and not, you know, have this applicant confused. Well, why are we going to this board versus that board or whatever in the city, you know, is involved. It's a little clearer, you know, clearer if we can, you know, make, make clarification that way. So something to think about, if you have any thoughts on that, you know, otherwise, you know, if you kind of think about cleaning up or just thinking of it as a clarification, you know, in the zoning, they would clarify, but not necessarily encompass this sort of, that is not to say. The DOD is what it is for downtown, the planning board, this jurisdiction, but I don't think the intent would be to take the DVA, for instance, whatever, like, and your boy, that would stay with the, you know, appeals. Right? Okay.
Since it was broad, I just had a question. The city doesn't have a sign, a sign board, right?
We don't, no.
I'm not sure. Where this is.
You know, I was on the board of appeals in a small town, you know, a hundred guys on other towns. They all had the sign, sign boards. That any type of sign changes and the ordinance went to them. And sometimes the planning board would look for their opinion.
Right. It might be advisory.
Advisory, right. And same thing for us when it came, even if it was a variance, we would look for them to tell us, you know, why is this a variance? Why, why doesn't this fit the ordinance? What's wrong? And, and the reason I, it comes to mind is, you know, we went through the whole age of when LEDs came out. And, you know, we went from allergens to LEDs, to things that lit, the sign that could move, the, you know, cartoons on them. And it was a pain in the ass, you know, being on the board of appeals, trying to get through that without that sign board.
It, it makes sense, I guess. My first inclination is on the years of experience that I had is, is, I mean, again, my first inclination is to say, probably not, we're not necessarily going to benefit from something like creating a board per se. And I see certain the benefit of having sort of expert, you know, advice or support, but I wouldn't necessarily want to create another process where it sort of slows people down and you get through the process in some way. And I'm hesitant to suggest the idea of very creating a board, right, to me or something. But I understand exactly what you're getting at, which is, you know, it's a special big area, let's say.
Right.
That requires a little bit of work.
You on planning board, you're going to have to sort it out.
But we're dealing with it. I mean, for as long as I've been on the board, and so there are hundreds of signs, pre-standing signs to the city that has met with our review, this board's review. So we've almost created a sign board, you know, subspecialty among our board in terms of like legacy and, and, you know, sort of institutional memory. We find it functions in the same way. I know we're not assigned to it per se, but over that time I've been on board, I've learned a lot about good neck lighting, LED lighting.
A ten o'chur, you know what a ten o'chur is?
What? A knit?
A knit. That's the luminosity of an LED.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. The, the, it's in kelp, measured in kelp, which is interesting. And then, and referred to as like the temperature, you know, cool and warm. But be that as it may, like, we.
Sounds like a knit.
A knit. We, but yeah, I, I, I know. It's kind of interesting.
But yeah. That's a good point. I just, I just haven't.
No, I wasn't suggesting create a board. Just maybe it's not a big enough issue that.
It might be more than your, your point being that a little more guidance needed, given the unusual, that there are less frequency to get signed, maybe, right?
Yeah.
And, yeah. We can, we can, on the staff side, sort of provide some of the other types, I think, or Rob mentioned, you know, the types of things that we kind of need to consider, the things we have to look for, you know, the good things about these, we kind of, you know, encourage or avoid.
Yeah, like the dirty words and signage are, you know, internal lighting.
Right.
You know, it's turned by lines of light pollution, you know, intensity, light overspray, you know, all sorts of.
Do you allow moving signs? Signs that can change their text?
Uh, it's, well, it's the internal illumination that's causing the issue. So if you've got, you know, in order to have something that's movable or changeable, right, then you've got to have some sort of digital thing, right? Otherwise.
Yeah, or a guide, pen, or card.
Right, right. So I mean, I actually, like, for instance, another thing, the good things that's happened in recent years that people have done is like the halo lighting of signs. I think it's really a good way of.
Yeah.
You could have lighting that's up there in the sign itself, but it isn't glaring directly out. It's just accenting the outside of the letter.
Yeah, it's reflective.
And that's a nice, you know, newer technique that people are using more frequently. I, I think I'd want to encourage or allow that type of, you know, it's internally illuminated in a way, people sort of behind the letter in a way. But it's not, it's not, not creating that issue that was raised by initial, you know, discussions of internal illumination.
So we don't allow internal illumination. Right. But the first example of that to be successfully deployed with halo, the halo technique would be Brown's War, which is a standoff, which is standoff architecture of a lettering of Brown's warp and then the halo behind it, which creates a back break against the brick.
Right.
And in relief, creates a black void of the character of the letter.
Right.
And so that's the signature. It's the outline of the halo lighting. It's kind of cool.
And just like lighting that goes onto the ceiling, it doesn't put the direct lighting into people's hands. It only, so it's a great way of doing that.
It's glow.
Yeah, the glow.
It's stuff, yeah. And what about the gas stations with their?
Well, quite frankly, I guess like, there's going to be plenty of case law.
Oh, they have LEDs.
Up in Story Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
That's the new mobile station.
On Water Street.
Yeah.
They got a label by it, you know, the old timey.
Yeah.
Doesn't the Shell station have LED lights facing the road?
Which has.
The one on Story Avenue.
Yeah.
And, you know, it says like 349.
Yeah.
From the road go local.
Sure that they got that in Story Avenue, yeah.
That was probably, that's part of their strength. That'd be part of their. Story Avenue is the very end of High Street.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the purpose we're granted some years ago.
That's the first thing people.
I remember that application. All right. So anything else?
Nothing.
All right. Motion was your?
So I'm over.
Seconded, motion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
What it cares. For sure, dude, thank you. Have a great night and thanks for lighting on.
They made this meeting possible.
Yeah, otherwise it couldn't have happened either.
Yeah. I feel like you were communicating with like a rover on Mars, you know, with the delay. Be like, I say there. I feel like we were communicating with like a rover on Mars, you know, with the delay, be like, I say there!
It must be a huge delay.